Call this meeting to order. The mission of the Escamby County Schools is to provide learners with opportunities to graduate college and/or career-ready. I'm going to ask the Vice President to lead us in the feds.
Attention, to live pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. We want to take this opportunity, as always, to welcome all of you to our meeting. And hopefully you can glean something that's going to be encouragement and encouraging to our stockholders.
And I would also like to extend my welcome. Thank you for all of our staff and our principals and our central office staff as well and our community that's here to support us throughout our meeting.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Hold on a second. It's been moved and properly seconded that the agenda be approved as presented. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it and so will. Approved the minutes for the following meeting, March 20th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes for March 20th, 2025. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it. And so this time we're going to have our superintendent march.
I was just looking around for Ms. Updike. I'm like, we want to recognize our Science Olympiad team. And you say that Ms. Updike is sporting the team shirt. Here comes our kids. Ms. Updike, if you'll take a minute to introduce your team.
Yes.
We want to just congratulate them on their great accomplishments. But I talked to Ms. Updike and I was like, would you please have the kids come by? We are really, really proud of their work and you guys are doing a great job. I want you to keep it up. And I know we got our sponsors. Thank you all see they're here.
So we're really excited because WS Neil Middle School used to be, I'm going to call us a powerhouse in Science Olympiad back in the day. Okay. When Steve Lambert and Donald Hardeman, Dennis Haddaway, when they were there, well, they all retired. So last year we started back our Science Olympiad team. We had not had one in a few years and COVID kind of threw a kink in that as well. So last year we went, we competed, we got a bid to go to state last year. This year we got to go again. We were super proud of the kids. It's very competitive. So state is at Auburn University. There were 11 teams in the state that got to go and we were one of the 11 in the middle school category. So we did not finish first, second, or third, but when we got back the total results, we had lots of fourth, fifth, and sixth place finishes in events, which is huge. Okay. So we're very proud of that. And that this type of, it's a huge commitment. There's a lot of individual studying and that the kids do on their own. And we're missing a few members as well. We have a few that weren't able to come today. But this is Ms. Blaney and Mr. Cook. They're two of our three sponsors and they've just done a phenomenal job with getting this team going and back in the right direction. So we're excited for the future.
And we look forward to that. I'd be delighted to hear the next time that you guys place, but keep up the good work because the competition makes you stronger.
Yes. Yes, it does. Thank you so much.
Congratulate.
Count them.
Thank you. Thank you. I do want to also, you know, congratulate them again because it is, you know, it's a very scary thing to go into a competition, particularly in science and math. And so I really commend their hard work. I also just want to take just a couple of minutes. We're going to highlight WS Neil baseball team is playing Friday and Saturday. The high school WS Neil baseball team will be playing Tallisus. And they're playing right now. I thought it was tomorrow and they changed the date again. There you go. So they're playing right now as we speak in the second round. Plumton is also playing right now. Now, what I was thinking a little bit ago was still true. But they're playing tomorrow and Saturday. Okay. All right. So they are, they traveled to Auburn. I also want to just take a second. WS Neil's track and WS Neil didn't send it to me, but I did see that they are also competing in sectionals on Friday and Saturday. Is that still true?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And illusion. So we're really proud of them. You know, our teams and track are just so competitive and I just look forward to great things from our schools and our students that are competing. So I can't wait to hear how that turns out. And then I want to take a minute, and I know Dr. Cooper West is somewhere nearby, but and I know Ms. Wilson is out today, but Escamby County Career Rating Center had a gold medal, gold medalist just awarded for cabinet making. That's Colby Lysenby. So that's an amazing accomplishment. He's actually a back-to-back gold medalist in the competition. Silver was Chloe Smith and that was for CPR and nursing aids. Another silver winner was John Smith family for action skills. So, you know, we have kids competing and doing great things on all different levels. So I just want to take a minute to recognize them as well. So that's my brief good news for today. We have a lot of other great things going, but we're going to keep it pretty. We've had a long meeting.
Though I'm bad on magic. Can you highlight those two staff? All of our administrative staff who earned their doctorate degrees during this month?
Yes. So actually this, Mike Mullin. Dr. Latonya Gill, who's our high school principal at Escamby County High, earned her doctorate in middle of March. So I think that was maybe the 18th or 19th. Dr. Jones earned hers last week. And Dr. Cooper West earned hers the week before. Yeah. Good job. Good job. A lot of hard work. A lot of hard work. We're very proud of them as well. Thank you. Those are, that is even more good news.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Dr. Colley, for those highlights. At this time, we have our informational item for the view of the monthly financial statement.
I'm sorry, I'm here. I guess we can, I'll show you the watch list. If it works. He's trying to check. I'm trying to check on what she traded me and you can get it now.
Sure.
Yeah. So let me get you the, you can see. Yeah, that's got you. So we need to zoom in on it.
Good afternoon, everyone. All right. I'm going to bring you guys the financial report for February 2025. Getting those first reports here are our standard reports submitted to the states. And you get the five financial reports, F1 through F3C, F2 here. The financial statement that summarizes our total revenues, breaking it down between the general, special revenue, debt service, capital projects, and trust. So so far year-to-date, you can see at the end of February, $25.7 million revenue as it received. Total expenditures overall for the district, about $26.4 million there. Factor in transfer ins and transfer outs, we're about $651,000 as far as expenditures over revenues. Now, again, there's several things that goes into play to this. We have a lot of carryover funds from last year for the grants and things like that. So we're required to spend that money by the end of this fiscal year. So while the balance will, as far as revenues and expenditures stay a negative, keep in mind the revenues are just a reflection of current year revenues that we receive from states and grants. And our carryover funds for stuff that we did not expend last year is built into this overall fund balance, debt services. Scroll through those. So let's see. Okay. So overall, unreserved fund balance for the general fund. You can see the month before, in the January, 5.21 in the months operated balance. And in the February, 5.21, so not much change. Fund balance is still staying the same. Overall expenditures, $4.2 million is what we're averaging. In the budget, original budget, we think we had it slightly over $4.2 million. In the budget amendment, I believe we are going to have to up it some, probably to maybe the 4.3, 4.4 range, but nothing huge, nothing alarming. But overall, everything looks good in the general fund. We don't have March. No, go ahead, Mark. I'll watch the score.
It'll be next one.
It'll be next one. I have it almost done, but there's a lag there before we get, before I get to the service payments from regions. So it's about a mark or so lag before we get to the last one. It's going to be a full report. Again, just showing that in the spreadsheet format, we see we're still in the dark green there. Everything still looks good. That $4.2 million represents about 5.2 months' operations earned. Again, we do have some expenditures planned to come out of this. Some fund balance will drop down some, but nothing too alarming. Compared to where we were a year ago this time and two years ago this time, fund balance is up about $1.7 million compared to last year, slightly over a million compared to two years ago. Looking at it in bar format, you can see compared to years prior, the trend is still staying level or going up and holding strong. Two-year trend here. Two-year trend here. The line slightly goes down, but it's still nothing to be alarmed about. And then looking over the 12-month trend, you can see the line is actually up over a year's time as far as in the general fund balance. Now, year-to-date expenditures, again, like I said, we do have some carryover money that we have to expend by the end of fiscal year. So we do expect our expenditures to be slightly more than the overall expenditures last year because we did receive more state money. So year-to-date, at the end of February, we're $446,000 more in expenditures compared to 2024 that. And then just the overall pie chart, you can see that we spend, well, slightly over 75% of our funds in instructional services there in the blue part, instructional support services in the building part, and then the green chunk there is what's called additional services, which is the base name for C and P and transportation. So overall, financial outlook looks strong for the district. No surprises coming up this month or in March. So.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
And every time he presents that, Anita, today, we were working just to make sure that, you know, what we're spending is planned for and that we all understand and we're documenting all those things. But thank you again, Mr. Ford.
Yes.
You're so lucky. Every day.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, for your financial report. And this report is received as presented, subject to order. Consent items. Item number one, approval of an out-of-state trip for WS Neil High School cheer team to attend camp in LaGrange, Georgia from July 15, 2025 through July 17, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve item number one under consent items, approval of an out-of-state trip for the WS Neil High School cheer team to attend camp in LaGrange, Georgia from July 15, 2025 through July 17, 2025. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it and so will. Item number two, approval of an out-of-state travel for the superintendent to attend Power School Age 2025 conference from July 22, 2025 through July 25, 2025 in Nashville, Tennessee.
As most of you know, I'm a champion of Power School and am the national advisor. So they always ask me to speak so they pay my conference registration, like a comp for me and then I'll have to pay just to get to the, and just pay for that conference, which has great updates for us as to really go to Power School.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the out-of-state travel for the superintendent to attend the Power School Age 2025 conference from July 22 through, 2025 through July 25, 2025 in Nashville, Tennessee.
All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it and so will.
Action items. Number one, approval of 2025 summer school salary schedule and summer work hours.
So you have that in your packet, but that is to make sure we pay our teachers for the summer school rates and then all of our employees that work during the summer. So that is a difference from what's in our salaries table. So we do try to give them a boost during the summer. The summer work hours, I know we've typically just presented it as informational, but I'm going to ask that you approve it because it does require those four tens. So in your memo, you have the hours that are laid out, 7 to 5:30 and so forth for our eight-hour employees, but also options on our seven-hour employees. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve of the 2025 summer school salary schedule and summer work hours. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it and so will. Item number two, approval of organizational change.
So as you know, we've had those presentations from the Wayne Frogger that did our organizational review. So that is one presenting is just the kind of highlights of that change that allowed you to agree that process moving forward and this sort of thing.
Okay. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the organizational change as presented. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it and so will. Item number three, approval of the following positions. Guidance and Support Services Supervisor, paid under the supervisor pay scale. Attendance, you want to deal with these?
Yes, sir, I can. So these are the four positions that maybe have a different name for them, but also for the Guidance and Support Services Supervisor, that job description is attached for you when you're active. And I'll even noted for our purposes that might steal that person's plate on, so that's why you're seeing that salary steal. That's for Guidance and Support Services, but also for attendance because we've talked about our chronic absenteeism and the urgent need that we have to do something seriously to intervene and help our kids come to school. So dedicating a person for attendance that will help lead that task force that I've talked to you about last month. Personnel Administrator Supervisor, in fact, that is a person that will be responsible for certification and for employment, you know. So that is that rename of the title. That's also in your packet. And then the Network Administrator. So in the past, we have had technicians, but we haven't had anyone that specialized in supporting our network and monitoring that. So that's what that position is. So that is a more highly skilled technician. So it does give us a great opportunity, especially as we move forward to try to manage the network and be able to provide everything we can to our schools.
Motion to approve these positions?
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the Guidance and Support Services Supervisor, the Attendance Supervisor, Personnel Administrator/Supervisor, and the Network Administrator's positions. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it and so will. Item number four, approval of contract with curriculum associates for I-RADY in the amount of $163,208 coming from the fiscal year 25 A and T funds.
So this will be for our K-5 schools, but also include our sixth grade at Hokesford. That way it's in one building, but they're doing the same things without having to do something different. I-RADY is our diagnostic and our screening tool that's required by the state, but we have that in place. And then there's another item that we'll come to that is related to 612. When you see that, it's another item.
I have a motion, Mr. Ford. Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the contract with curriculum associates for I-RADY in the amount of $163,208 paid for by the fiscal year 25 A and T funds. Item number five, approval of purchase of library materials from Permabound for AC Moore Primary School in the amount of $55,998.89. The funding will...
Yes, so this is, this is really a great part of how we're trying to complete AC Moore. They don't have a library and this will give us a startup library for that school. So, you know, it's a very specific quote for a very specific amount, but that gives us a really good opening day library. They will actually come in and show people to score us and work with our person that we're going to hire and let me use that for that school. So, um, so thank you.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the purchase of library materials from Permabound for AC Moore Primary School in the amount of $55,998.89. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it and so will. Number six, approval to renew annual Cognia membership in the amount of $16,800 from local funds.
So as you recall, Cognia is our accreditation system, you know, support. So this gives us an opportunity to make sure that we stay in compliance that we are accredited. So there's always a fee for that, you know, that was part of our work that we did to get there now.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the renewal of the annual Cognia membership in the amount of $16,800. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it and so will. Number seven, approval of repair of the audio system in the amount of $7,850 and the purchase of speaker mics and subwoofer in the amount of $8,145 for the Escamby County High School Auditorium from Audio Plus, funding from the fiscal year 24 A and T.
So if you've been in that auditorium and know that the sound is not what we would hope it would. So this actually repairs and then provides that subwoofer, which will give enough sound out for the audience in depth of ear and those mics that they need. So that's the way that school. Do expect that there'll be other Audio Plus items that we'll bring to you in the next meeting, but this is one that fixes the auditorium, okay, for Escamby County High. We also have other needs at other schools.
Like Plumton has.
It is. And so during this time of graduations, we have been working with them to get the course of the new, make sure that everybody's in great shape for their auditoriums.
Motion. It's been moved and properly seconded for the approval of repair of the audio system in the amount of $7,850 and the purchase of speakers, mics, and subwoofers in the amount of $8,145 for the Escamby County Auditorium from the Audio Plus. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it and so will. Number eight, approval of the purchase of fire alarm system in the amount of $23,000 for the Plumton Middle School wing from Audio Plus, fiscal year 25, oh, 24, and A and T funds.
And again, this is, you know, that, we completed that building, just making sure that the fire alarm system has been, that they've been.
It's on there.
So like I said, that is a brand, is a, maybe an older shell, but it is a brand new building on the inside.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded for the approval of the purchase of, of the alarm system in the amount of $23,000 for the Plumton Middle School wing from Audio Plus. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it and so will. Item number nine, approval of purchase of phonics curriculum program from 95% group in the amount of $15,017.
So this will be our tier three for learning for our summer learning with our state escape class. The alternative, the only one that may be taken, I expect, but we have a great proposal with them. This is something that the state recommended to our editor supervisor, of course, this is part of tier three's instruction in the summer learning. Is this type of...
This is local.
This is the...
So learning? No, it's paid out in a part and it's going to be a small part local. Most of the state classes will give, give some state...
For assessment. I refer back to him because that was a note I didn't have back. Yeah, we, we had earns of dollars on assessment programs. So we have paid for that out of our home funds and have a best one. So we'll utilize those funds. Thank you for asking.
May I have a motion? Motion. It's been moved and properly seconded for approval of the purchase of phonics curriculum program from 95% group in the amount of $15,017 paid for from our local and state funds. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it and so will. Item number 10, approval of contract with AppTogee Incorporated for local mobile app and web development in the amount of $28,268.75 paid for from fiscal year 25 and A and T funds.
So as you know, you know, the website is something near and dear to me, but we are paying a lot of money for our current provider. So we had a team that looked at a couple of different programs from different companies and this will give us the opportunity to cut our cost for the website. We have had the IT team review those programs and make the regulations. So the legislation was AppTogee and it was on one of those proposed calls as well. AppTogee offers them as an app for free. The district and the school sites are all bundled under student count versus per-site calls. So we end up paying half of what we would for everything. So we will make that move this summer and we will watch over any case. It's very friendly for the social media and the communication, you can do that, which would be nice.
Good man.
We're looking at every dollar. Mr. Ford, we talk every day about them.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the contract with AppTogee Incorporated for mobile app and web development in the amount of $28,268.75. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay. Ayes have it and so will. Item number 11, approval of contract with Heinman for the purchase of Do the Math Legacy 25, 26 and Summer School 25 consumables in the amount of $72,112.61.
It's coming from our big group funds and agencies. Thank you, Ms. Sandy. Bear with me. We just had a couple that we had not wrapped up. Mr. Ford, I was working in meetings this week.
Thank you, Ms. Andy. Bear with me. We just had a couple that we had not wrapped up. Mr. Ford, I'd like to work in a minute this week as well.
We have a motion to approve. It's been moved and properly second that we approve the contract.
I didn't get that. I'm sorry who made the motion. Okay, second.
Approval of contract with Heinman for the purchase of Do the Math Legacy twenty five, twenty six and Summer School twenty five consumables in the amount of seventy two thousand one hundred twelve dollars and sixty one cents. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so would it. Item number twelve, approval to enter into contract with. IXL? IXL Learning for Educational Technology for Elementary School Services in the amount of thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars coming from the fiscal year twenty five A and T funds.
IXL. IXL is going to be six twelve. So it's the opposite of the I-REDI, but it's for the, our middle school and our high school. It also provides the diagnostics and the screeners that we need, but it provides instructional lessons in reading and math, in particular ACT prep, worky prep, AAT prep. So it is a great resource for us and a very nice call. As you notice, the difference we get six twelve for and I-REDI is a little higher. So we have made, we made a decision. The curriculum team worked together evaluating the two programs and decided IXL was a better fit for middle school, high school.
The move and properly second to approve the to approve the contract. Approve and to enter into the contract with IXL Learning for Educational Technology for educate, uh elementary school services in the amount of thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so would it. Number thirteen, approval of the change order for WS Neil High School Storm Doors in the amount of one hundred sixty four thousand two hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents.
So this will be paid from our lawsuit and multiple funds? So if you have any questions, Barnett, that's in your packet.
Motion to approve. The move and properly second that we approve the approval of the change order for WS Neil High School Storm Doors in the amount of one hundred sixty four thousand two hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so would it. Item fourteen, approval of contract with innovate behavior or innovative behavioral and counseling services for behavior analytics consultation services for the twenty five, twenty six school year paid out of the fiscal year twenty six IDA.
So I was going to, I was looking around, Sid and Ms. Barnett was here, but this has been something that we added currently that we have, and this is a continuation for next year. Kayla Lumpkin has done a great job working with our schools and providing that, so we're looking for some therapeutic sense as well.
The move and properly second that we approve the contract for innovative behavioral and consulting services for behavior analytics consultation services for the twenty five, twenty six school year. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so would it. Thank you so very, very much. Under our item, agenda item number ten, miscellaneous approval of the payment of bills and payroll. It's the move and properly second that we approve of the payment of the bills and payroll. All in favor, let it be known.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so would it. Thank you again. We've come to personnel. We'll take a minute. Probably review what you already reviewed and reviewed several times. We'll take another minute.
If you know a math coach position, there is a two oh two position that is funded by the Office of Math and Security from the state. So they actually wrote that job description for and did the ten month position. So as you know, our teachers have to apply to be the math coach. Some of them are, as you notice, math coach to math coach. So it's math coach nine months, maybe seven days versus math coach two oh two. So they are a yearly funded position, but that is something that, you know, initiative with the memorcy act was provide math coach to every school. So we are, we have one more to hire. Please do notice we have all of them except one that will be at the service until we earn an extra one. We just didn't anticipate we're earning some more probably next year.
There's no holdout. We got a motion. This motion for. Second. The move and properly second that we approve the personnel recommendations as presented. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so would it. Thank you so very, very much. Next. Item says executive session. We're going to go into, may I have a motion? Oh, you're going to read your statement.
Sure. I just, as counsel for the board, I'll certify that we need to go into executive session so that I can discuss potential litigation with the board. And then I know there's some expulsions on the agenda. Those items could also be handled in the executive session due to the nature of discussing the minor chapter.
May I have a motion to go into the executive session? Is that appropriate? Move and properly second that we go into the executive session. I'm going to guess an hour.
That sounds reasonable. I'm honestly not sure the exact time because I don't know how long. My purposes would be about ten, fifteen minutes if you're going to the litigation, but the hearing, the expulsion, I'm not sure.
Okay, since we have some heavy lifting to do, I'm going to say we'll be in the executive session for about an hour. Okay. Okay, so we're going to ask all who are yes, to please allow us the space. And can I, do I need to reopen our public meeting as to?
Yes.
We need a motion to continue our public meeting agenda. The move and properly second that we agree to being our regular meeting. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so would it. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Under our next item for consideration, it says, number one, recommendation for the expulsion of Escambia County school student for a period of up to one calendar year for violation of the Escambia County System Board Policy Student Code of Conduct. The superintendent will allow students to receive educational services through the Escambia County Virtual School.
This will also include that the student will still be spared a diploma upon successful completion of all coursework.
Will you do all these at one time or you need to do them separately?
May I have a motion concerning the second. The superintendent's recommendation. Did you hear?
I did. Hold on, Mr. Second. Student will receive diploma? Yes, based on successful completion of coursework. Okay, motion? Was there a motion?
No, ma'am. Motion concerning superintendent's recommendation. The move and properly second that we approve the superintendent's recommendation on recommendation or student number one. Number two, student number two. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead of myself. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay. Do we need to take a walk? One night, correct? Recommendation number two, recommendation for the expulsion of an Escambia County High School student for a period of up to one calendar year for violation of the Escambia County System Board Policy slash Student Conduct. The student will, the superintendent will allow the student to receive educational services through county virtual school.
This also will include receiving their diploma based on successful completion of coursework.
Motion to accept superintendent's recommendation.
The move and properly second that we accept the recommendation of our superintendent concerning recommendation number two. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay. Ayes have it and so would it. Recommendation number three, recommendation for the expulsion of a Escambia County High School student for a period of up to one calendar year for violation of the Escambia County Board, System Board Policy slash Student Code of Conduct. The superintendent will allow a student to receive educational services through Escambia County Virtual School.
And this will include receiving their diploma upon successful completion of coursework.
The move and properly second that we accept the recommendation of the superintendent concerning recommendation number three. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers nay, ayes have it and so would it. Is there any other business we need to?
We do need to set our next meeting.
Our next meeting.
I know I proposed the eighth, then I proposed the twelfth because I heard about the academic all-stars were taking place. So I moved it to the Monday. Could we please go back to the eighth and meet at Atmore? That will be just right away from the Rotary where the academic all-stars will be and we can meet at four thirty. I think it'll be a very short meeting. We don't anticipate, and we'll skip the workshop. Okay, I'll give you a break this month. We'll skip the workshop if we can meet at the eighth. It's a Thursday. And then that way, what we'll be facing is some non-vinewalls, but also we need to hire for summer school. So those are just, I think it'll be mostly personnel. I think it'll be a very brief meeting. It's Atmore. The academic all-stars are at the Rotary at six o'clock. So we.
Escambia County High School is Rotary, so we'll.
We'll be close by. So we could do it at the Atmore Central Office at four thirty. Yes, sir. And we'll skip our board work session because I don't think we'll have a ton of items on there. I think we'll have just maybe one or two, but mostly it'll be personnel. So it should be a very brief meeting. We'll get our head right over to the high school.
Academic All-Stars is at six at the high school.
At the high school.
Academic All-Stars, six o'clock.
Six o'clock at the high school. Rotary is managing that, Ms. Teedman?
It's, it's the Rotary Club, Academic All-Stars. And they recognize students from.
So we do have a big battle at back at Atmore at the high school. It was at the church last year and we had parking issues and challenges. This is wonderful.
Back at the high school. They recognize ninth through twelfth grade students from Apple Christian Schools, Academy, ECHS and more view.
It's a nice event. Four thirty on May the eighth. I'll put it in your newsletter this week. We'll change it back to, we'll move it to Atmore at four thirty on the eighth and then we can go over to the All-Stars for those.
All minds clear? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.